Good evening. Welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, November 3rd, 2021. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast live via East Hampton Media on Charter Channel 193 and livestreamed on East Hampton Media's YouTube channel. As always, we thank East Hampton Media for bringing these meetings to the community. All councilors and participants in this meeting are gathered remotely under an executive order by Governor Baker, which was extended to April 2022, allowing us to do so. I remind both the members of the city council and of the public to remain on mute until recognized by the chair. Also, for members of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in public speak or the public hearings. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Barbara?
Peg Coniff.
Here.
Salem Derby.
Present.
Erica Flood.
Here.
Omar Gomez.
Here.
JP Kuzinski.
Here.
Tom Peak. Yep. Dan Rist.
Here.
Lindsay Rothschild. Owen Zerrit.
Okay, so right now we have six, but I would imagine that Tom Peak will be joining.
He's joining right now.
Okay. Okay. We'll now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America.
America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
Against one nation.
Under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of October 20.
Move to approve the minutes?
No.
Oh, wait, they're not ready. They're not ready.
I didn't have time.
We need, we need, we need something that says, "Don't have them." All right, we have a public speak tonight. If anyone from the public would like to speak on anything other than what we have in our public hearing, you can go ahead and, under the Reactions button at the bottom of your screen, there is a raise hand feature. If you want to go ahead and press that, we will call on you in the order in which you appear. Okay, seeing none, we will move on. It's a little early to start the public hearings, so we will go right into communication from elected boards and elected officials. Boards are not elected. Boards and committees. Anyone have anything they'd like to speak to? Omar Gomez.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to make an announcement from the Hampton Congressional Church. They have food sources and their distribution every second Wednesday of the month. So if anyone needs food, especially in this time, that is kind of tough for a lot of families, and they have meat, pasta, they have different kinds of food. So you can call to this number, 413-527-4790, and they will arrange an appointment with you, and you can go to the church, or they can deliver food to you, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Flood or Bodri, whichever you'd like to be called at this point.
Flood legally. Paperwork. I just want to extend a congratulations to all the newly elected city councilors who will be joining, of course, in January. And I also want to just congratulate and thank everybody who was involved in the elections yesterday. It was incredibly smooth, very well-run at the high school. And I know there's a lot of work that goes into that, and that's a very long day for everybody involved. So a big thanks, and again, congratulations to Mayor LaChapelle and to the new councilors who will be joining. Looking forward to hearing those voices and watching you grow as representatives of our city.
Great, thank you. Counselor Peak?
On that, I wanted to share a quick story. When I went to vote, you know, so this was the first time that the city's ever used ranked choice voting. When I went to vote, somebody, there was, you know, a couple of things that are not really proper ways to fill your ballot out. Somebody, the person right in front of me, had done one of those. They put the ballot in, it caught the issue, and the person who was working with that machine looked it over perfectly, explained what was wrong, and gave the person the option to either just put it in as-is or to go and do it, you know, differently. And they did just an incredible job explaining the whole thing. The person really understood what was going on. And just, I really wanted to give a shout-out to Barb and to Dan Gilbert and the whole team there for just setting that up in a way that I think was really well-run, and it was really exciting experiencing it as a user. So, thanks, everybody.
Great. Yeah, it was pretty exciting, actually. Counselor Kuzinski?
I also would like to extend congratulations. Thank you, Erica, and for bringing this up to everyone who was involved in the election. But I also wanted to add to what you had said. It's not only the people who will be joining us, but the people who participated, because participation is what this is all about. There were lots of folks who would think of themselves as not being successful. I call it success. I think anytime you go out before the public and make statements and do your very best to bring about a public dialogue, I think you and your supporters are doing wonderfully. I like to think of it as congratulations to everyone. So, I'd like to add to Counselor Flood's comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the council? Counselor Rist?
I would be remiss if I didn't say something, and I'm going to say it probably three more times. I want to thank Counselor Flood and Counselor Coniff for their exceptional work, their fairness, and their diligence the last two years. It's unfortunate we couldn't meet in public. I know Erica never did get to do that, but that's the way it goes when a pandemic hits us. But thank you both, and I'm going to thank you three more times. Thank you.
All right, sounds good. I'll take it. I just wanted to make an announcement. As you guys know, I work at the vaccine clinics in North Hampton. North Hampton will be having a pediatric vaccine clinic on Sunday, now that the 5 to 11 age has been approved for vaccines. So that's going to happen on Sunday at the Elks Club in North Hampton from, I believe it's 10 to 4. You do need to pre-register, and at least as of starting this meeting, I don't think the link was ready yet, but that will, they'll get, I'll put it on my counselor page when that is ready, if anyone wants to register their child between 5 and 11 for that pediatric clinic on Sunday. We were going to have, and I don't see them on here, do you, Dan? We were going to have the folks from the city IT department to talk a little bit about Google Meets, just to the councilors. We're kind of at that crossroads now where Zoom is going to go away, we're going to start using Google Meets, and I wanted to have just an open dialogue with all of you in this setting to kind of find out about your comfort level. Do you think each of you needs to be trained, because the IT department has training? Do you want to be trained? We're going to start using Google Meets exclusively in the next probably month, and I want to make sure that you're all comfortable with it. And so, we had, we were going to have Karen here, but something may have come up. So, we'll be working through that with that IT group, and then we'll be explaining how you can use your own individual ID or the city council ID, which we're also setting up just as a stopgap in case somebody has any concerns. So, throwing it out there, Counselor Peak, do you have any comments?
I've used Google Meets, and I feel pretty comfortable with it, but it might not hurt just because it is a slightly different interface to set up, just like, maybe like a half an hour training for folks who could benefit from that, either right before a meeting or the day before a meeting or something, just for anyone who just wants to familiarize themselves with the new interface and where all the buttons are. It's a pretty simple, or it's a pretty similar thing, but it's just a little bit different, and there's a learning curve that might take 10 minutes to figure out, but that learning curve you might not want to do, like during a council meeting. So, that's just like, that was sort of my idea.
Okay, yeah, I agree. Counselor Flood?
I agree, and I'm also just wondering how this affects public and their ability to access our meetings. Everybody's really used to Zoom. Is there a way for us to record that Google Meet session and then play it back on the East Hampton Media various channels so that others can train vicariously with us?
Yeah, so one of the good things about Google Meets that's different from Zoom, if you guys remember back when we were starting Zoom, users and people who were even just attending our meetings would have to either download the application or have the application kind of be available to them in one way or the other. Google Meets is not that way. You just click on the link and you're there. So I think it will actually be easier for a lot of folks in that regard. I think that's a great idea. If, as long as, my concern is the training would be from our perspective in running a meeting, and I would, I would hope that that wouldn't confuse people who are participating in a meeting. So, we may have to do maybe a, maybe a little one-off to show how it looks when you're participating, but it's not a bad idea, and we can talk to Karen and Noah about that.
That's great. Obviously, I haven't used Google Meets, so I'm coming at this from like Blank Slate. And now, I'm just thinking, maybe I can volunteer as a member of East Hampton Media to put together like a quick infomercial that could then be shared on social media, so people understand that it's even much easier than Zoom to access.
So, I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
Great.
Counselor Rist?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that we had a little trial session, Counselor Gomez and Counselor Coniff and myself with Karen and Noah, and it was fairly easy to learn really quickly. I think if any of us have, want to meet with them, they'll give you 10 minutes of their time, and you can have a Google Meet session where they, they are online with you, and you'll learn it. It's not hard. There's a couple of different things about it, but I think it's, it is actually easier, and my best advantage is I think it's more secure. There are some things we need to work out, like the chat room, which we're trying to disable, we don't want that, and things like that. So, I'm going to suggest, President Coniff, that we hold off on adopting Google Meets and have this, find out if Karen and Noah can come to the next meeting and give us another rundown. In the meantime, councilors, why don't you get in touch with them, try a Google Meets with them individually, so that when we discuss it next meeting, you can tell us how you feel. I would really recommend it. I think they have, they can give you 10 minutes of their time to show you a little bit about it. Although, if you go online and just do it in your own account, you could, it's not hard, so.
Right, and the advantage to using Google Meets, which I think, once we get the security figured out, where everyone's account has the same settings for security, so everybody should disable chat and all of that, by having multiple accounts, we won't run into what we've run into over the last two years, which is conflicting meetings happening at the same time. Because we all have our own Google Meets account, we could conceivably set up meetings that run concurrently with different IDs. So, that is a positive, and we'll explore that as well. Counselor Kuzinski?
It's great to hear the positive there. I just am throwing it out that I have never done Google Meets, so it's another challenge. It'll be fun, and I look forward to it. So, I appreciate, Madam President, your organizing this. And I do hope that all members of the public can get a training session of some sort. That is so important, to be sure that everyone has as much access as possible. So, thank you.
Thank you. I mean, and, you know, realistically, let's hope that this isn't for a lot, many more months, that it's, you know, that we'll all be able to be back in city council together at some point. But for now, I think we have to assume that it's going to go at least through one or two, possibly three months into the new year. But Mayor, I saw that your hand was up. Did you have a comment? Nope.
Nope.
Okay. No worries. Counselor Flood, did you have another question?
Just one more. Sorry, I'm not kidding, class. But speaking of, so with the separate accounts, then, are we possibly moving in the direction of committee chairs, then, having accounts? So, okay, great. Fantastic. That's all.
Yeah, and I believe those have already been set up. The council is not going to take ownership of training all the committees. That's going to probably be handled by Noah and Karen and the city. But that's happening now, and they, I believe that Karen has set up like, you know, each committee chair as an email. And so, I think that's moving forward. Counselor Rist?
Yeah, I wanted to say, if any of you want to try it, all of your email, when you go down your email, there's a big cube box of little dots over on the right-hand side, and Google Meets is right there. If you click on it, you might be able to just look at it and set up, like JP, if you wanted to look at it, that's the way to do it. And I think we're trying to, they're trying to figure out all of the little things that we were concerned about. So, it's probably good that we're not starting right away. We might as well let them maybe get in touch with President Coniff about where they're at with all that.
Yeah, and, you know, my perspective is that I want all of the accounts that are going to be used to have the identical security, so that the public has the same experience, whether Counselor Kuzinski sets up the meeting on his ID or Counselor Peak sets it up on his ID, it's going to look the same to everybody, and there won't be a chat function working in one and a chat function not working in another. But my most worrisome concern is that it does not automatically start recording. You have to tell it to record, and that is going to be the thing that will be the most challenging. And so, that's my biggest fear right now, is that we'll forget to start that. But we did talk about changing our agendas, so that the first thing on the agenda is start the recording. So, that may have to happen, and so, we talked about that. So, anyway, that's kind of a quick and dirty on Google Meets. I just wanted, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Derby, go ahead.
Well, you just said that, and I'm wondering if we're recording.
Oh, good point. See?
Didn't record it. Oh, my God, it's my fault.
Recording in progress.
But, but the beauty of this is it's live, so East Hampton Media is recording it whether I do or not.
That's good.
Thanks, Sam.
My question.
See? It's just getting working. Why say that again, Counselor?
Was it on the agenda?
Exactly.
I think I failed the president. I apologize. To remind her to start it.
It's fine, it's fine. We do have a backup with East Hampton Media for this meeting, so we're fine. Okay, so that's that. I just wanted to kind of get that out there to everyone.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to open the public hearings.
Second.
Motion and a second, open the public hearings. Any discussion? Barbara?
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Okay, public hearings are now open. Counselor Rist?
First item on the public hearings is tax classification. The assessor has requested that we continue this public hearing to the next meeting, which I'm going to make a motion to do, because he wants to give us a lot of the values he's, they're working on, although that's not something we deal with. We deal with the classification. He requested that. He wanted to have a good session with us. So, at the finance, we decided to wait on that. So, we will be discussing the tax classification at the finance meeting next week. And I, unless anybody has something to say about tax classification now, I will continue that in a motion.
Second.
Well, I didn't do it yet. I just want to make sure there's no one from the public who wanted to say something about it, because they came. So, next time, we'll have it. So, I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing on tax classification in the November 17th meeting.
Second.
Motion, second, continue the public hearing for tax classification. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
All right, the next interdepartmental transfer deals with trying to firm up the budget of the building, the building department. It is, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jen or the mayor, Jen Galan, our treasurer is here. This was to deal with the shortfall in the building commissioner position or one of the salaries lines. Can you, I don't have my notes in front of me. Can you update us on that? I'm pretty sure that's all it is. Jen, maybe?
I can, but I know that Hadal had prepared the documentation, so she might be able to speak better to it.
Okay. Hadal?
Hi. Okay, so this is the, basically, covering building inspector salary, salary till June 30th. After calculation, it seems that there are, we are also having two other inspectors on, one inspector, wiring inspector, is now flat rate, so that changes the budget dollar amount in that line item. So, if we fulfill this position with the salary packet offered to the new building inspector, we will be short by the end of June 30th by $6,000. So, we are just filling in the money right now, so we are not facing any budget deficit at the end of the fiscal year.
Yes, and that's exactly what the reserve fund is for, so we can fill these holes that come up.
Yes.
Councilors have any questions? About members of the public, anybody want to say anything? Raise your hand on the reaction.
Not seeing any.
If it please, the President, I will make a motion.
Please.
I make a motion, the full council approve an interdepartmental transfer. The amount requested is $6,000 to be transferred from the reserve fund, $6,000, to be transferred to the building full-time permanent position account, $6,000, for the purpose of fixing the building department budget.
Second.
Motion, a second, to transfer from the reserve fund to the building full-time permanent position fund, $6,000. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Motion passes.
The next item is a good use of the cannabis stabilization account. As we all know, the planning department works feverishly licensing and dealing with our cannabis retail, and this is a way to supplement their budget so that salaries and et cetera can be funded through cannabis stabilization rather than the general fund. I'm going to let Planner Bag, I think he's here on the call, explain this further for all of you, be better than me, since I don't have my notes.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Thank you for talking about this. So, I just wanted to remind people that this cover letter and information is in the October 6th packet. So, we submitted it a little while ago. In the cover letter, you know, I'm just going to try to summarize it a little bit, but there's three parts to this request. The first part is a request for $34,000 to fund a portion of the city planner's salary. And, you know, I think it's really important, and it's kind of written this way, is that this is, this is not a salary increase, and it's not a raise. It's really kind of a way, it's reflective of the impact and the amount of time that this, that this position has absorbed in kind of making, you know, kind of creating and supporting the cannabis industry that we, that we now have. Over the past four years, in particular, the planning department, particularly, you know, the city planner, it happens to be me, but it's that this, this, you know, the department head role has been really involved in a lot of the formulation of the industry. And so, you know, I'm making mention of the creation of the zoning consultation with quite a large number and a wide range of prospective businesses that, you know, many of you have never heard of them, because they've consulted with us and didn't choose to select East Hampton and work here. But, you know, that's time I'll never get back. And it's a fair amount of time spent to even figure out who these people are, and if they want to locate in East Hampton, and what type of business they're operating in, all that sort of thing. Sort of administration of special permit processes. So, you know, we've had, we have five retail operations, all of which had special permits. We've got cultivation operations, and not to pick on any one in particular, but if you've looked at INSA, for example, you know, they've already come through the permitting process four times. Kind of, they are also evolving through the permitting process and their evolution of whatever they're doing. They've been before the planning board four times, which is, you know, every part of the public hearing process is extensive, and this is all new. So, this is different than, you know, dealing with other applications who, you know, they're kind of more straightforward, and we kind of know the process. These are different, and everything's new. Then, you know, we, I've been involved, I've been supporting and working directly with the mayor on all the other pieces of these puzzles that have come forward. And so, this is not unique. It's not unique for the planning department to have staff positions funded by multiple sources. So, my example that I have in the memo is the assistant planner position, so the position currently filled by Jamie Webb. You know, it's funded 29% by Community Development Block Grant, and 5% from the CPA. So, that position alone is, you know, more than, you know, it's like 35% funded from other sources. And so, what I'm asking for is these funds to be contributing to my position for a period of approximately three years. So, I'm cognizant that this is not a permanent, this is not a permanent fix or shift. But in the times, you know, in the past couple of years with budget being level-funded or cut, at the same time, the demands and expectations of everyone are growing. This is, this is a creative way to keep the planning department kind of really modestly growing. To make up the funds over three years, I would take any opportunity that we are given to increase our budgets, you know, and that's the hope. That's the idea, is that our budgets will be able to increase again someday. The money will be built back in from the general fund. The reason why this is important is because with, with this, you know, if this is approved, then what we're able to do is make the conservation agent full-time, taking this 40% of the salary and moving it, so it stays in the planning department. And, you know, in the past couple of years, in my budget, I've articulated that that's an important thing for us to be looking at, is making that position full-time. You know, we're all looking at, we're all hearing about climate change. We're hearing about sustainability, environmental issues, trails, and all those things. And so, that's, those are the things that we're not doing with the conservation agent being only 12 hours a week. So, it's a strategy to realize an impact from the cannabis and do something really positive with the planning department through that. So, that's the first part, and I don't know if I should, I think the other parts are not as complex, but I'm also asking for $60,000 for the planning department to have access to for consulting purposes. So, this would be both, this would be for cannabis-related projects and general projects. So, this kind of seed money is important for us to, we can pay consultants, usually small amounts, to start a process or investigate certain things, and it often leads us down a path, like we do this a lot for grant funding, where we need a little bit of money to get a consultant on board to orient everything and come up with cost estimates, and it makes us kind of closer to shovel-ready for certain things. So, that's the $60,000, and it may or may not sound like a lot to people, but the example that I have in the memo is, we are looking at the intersection at Parsons and Ferry Street. It's a really problematic intersection. It's close to one of our most popular dispensaries, and that design sort of process and the investigation is $46,000. So, you know, for one project, just to even evaluate something, you know, those are, those are kind of the numbers that we might be looking at. There's quite a few projects that we want to initiate with that cannabis money. So, we've now been in the industry for, we had this industry for three years, looking at pedestrian safety in and around the dispensaries, looking at traffic or other, you know, we don't, we want to take some time to look at what's happening around these dispensaries. And this, this money would allow, you know, the planning department to get scopes of services and engage with, you know, various consultants to do that work. And for non-planning, I mean, for non-cannabis-related activities, the example I would just throw out there is where we are trying to advance some pedestrian safety improvements for the new school. And so, for example, you know, my department has been And so, for example, you know, my department has been funding these smaller feasibility studies. So often that's the first step to looking at like, can we, can we widen the side, can we fix the sidewalks on Park Street? You know, and, and that takes, that takes money to hire a consultant to even understand if there's a project there and if we're prepared to apply for a grant. So that's the nature of that request. And then the last is a $3,000 request to cover the entire city's participation in the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. So this is just a citywide, you know, it's a, it's a required fee for the city that we're, we're proposing these funds for. So I'm happy to take questions and go from there.
Just wanted everybody to understand also that the reason he mentioned three years is the impact funds we get from cannabis retail have a five-year limit. So after five years, they no longer come from that particular retailer. I assume that it depends on when the retailer started giving them. So there may be some coming in as different retailer come in. But that's why Jeff mentioned three years.
Council Derby?
Thank you, Madam President. I, I just wanted to say that I am fully in support of all of these. I can attest to the fact that the planning department is put under a lot of pressure with the, you know, between medical, between recreational and now with delivery coming online. I think this is a, I think it's honestly a really creative way to be able to, you know, expand the, the department in a way that it needs to be expanded. And then as far as the other monies, I, I think these are really important pieces to the puzzle that Jeff is putting together, which, you know, as we've seen it come together so far with the open space and recreation plan and all of these other things kind of coming into focus. You know, it's, it's really one of the things that makes East Hampton such a great place. And supporting our planning department in that way is just going to continue that progress forward. And I know that Jeff's working on along with Safe Roots to School, a potential corridor from, you know, the farthest parts of East Hampton to the new school to downtown. And I think that's an important thing that could be potentially be impacted by this. So I, I'm in full support of it.
Counselor Kuzinski.
I'm glad to hear that there's no raises or salary increases for anyone in the, in, in, in the department. As you, you stated, Planner Bag, you can nod your head if that's what I heard correctly.
That's correct.
Thank you. And, and I, I certainly as agree with Counselor Derby that, you know, doing all the work that you do, and, and, and I appreciate your mentioning that there are lots of folks who asked about things. There are lots of folks who ask about things for the planner. And as East Hampton is growing, especially with cannabis, there have been lots of questions and you've been there. I haven't heard any complaints about, about folks saying that you weren't there to try to answer those questions for them. Particularly when, when it came to, to the development of a new industry cannabis coming to town, new regulations, new, everything's new. What are we gonna do? How are we gonna do it? Where can it go? So I can appreciate the use of this money and I agree with Counselor Derby and with you Planner Bag that using the funds for the personnel that you've mentioned, the CONCOM, yes, we need an addition to the CONCOM. That has been long in, in, in the way on the sidelines. And appreciate you're talking about sidewalks and maybe doing certain expansions like on Park Street. But can I throw something on the table? When it comes to sidewalks, has anyone here taken the time to walk on Northampton Street? Anyone who would go to the cannabis sites on Northampton Street, if they were to use the sidewalks would find this utterly deplorable. They shrink down to about in some sections, a foot and a half or a foot because a pole, a utility pole is right in the way. So a study on what we could do with our sidewalks on Northampton Street, I think particularly all the way to the traffic light at the intersection of Florence Road from West Street to Florence Road would really be, be a useful use of cannabis funds, I think.
Thank you, Counselor Kuzinski. Counselor Peak?
Thanks. Um, I, I think this is a good idea. I historically have had a little bit of a concern about funding sort of like ongoing expenditures with cannabis money. But as Jeff Bag pointed out, this isn't really ongoing, it's just for three years. And so I think, I think it's fine. I think it's sensible that if we are putting in a lot of expensive work behalf of our city, as a city government, into things that are then actually generating city revenue, that some of that city revenue, you know, pay for the department that's doing that work. I think that's, that's really sensible. And so I'm in support of it. I guess my only thing is just, I, I recently did read that Massachusetts cannabis prices are beginning to fall. And so just as a heads up, you know, when, as we look at the cannabis revenue as a, as a source of ongoing profit, if, if prices fall and that doesn't induce additional consumption, this, this could be a, a source of revenue that we, we might see shrinking going into the near future. And I, I just want to say that as like, a, a, as just something that as we budget for the future, we just might want to be cognizant of. But in terms of right now and you know, how we use this money and the things we spend it on, I think this makes a lot of sense.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to say the 60,000 that is part of this is for professional services. And I think that's excellent because that's kind of a one-time expense per year where Jeff needs the consultations for all of these projects that are going on in the city. And as he mentioned, what was it? The Ferry Street costs $46,000 that our Parsons Street intersection just for consultation. So I think that's even, that, that's the best part of this particular request because they're always going to be there. And they're not necessarily something that, well, we're gonna have to have them in the future, but it's a good way to pay for them now while we have the money.
Counselor Flood?
Yeah, I wholeheartedly agree with that statement that Counselor Rist just made. And I just want to share, I mean, of course, I live in this neighborhood. I'm on Parsons Street and this time of year, when I try to just go for a walk at the end of my workday, it's dark. And the other night I forgot to take my flashlight and you feel like you're stumbling through the dark, the sidewalk is crooked, cars are coming. It's really not only dangerous for pedestrians during the day because of the traffic, but at night when the traffic calms down, there's very little streetlights and very uneven sidewalks. And I'm an able-bodied individual. So if I imagine somebody that is with a cane or a walker or some of my neighbors in wheelchairs in the winter, like this infrastructure really needs a lot of work to make it safe for everybody in this area. So I'm just, I want to thank Planner Bag and the planning department for all of their efforts, especially in this area. I don't, I can't think of better use of these funds while we have them. I agree, we need to look towards the future. And, you know, not count it as a recurring revenue source, but while they're there, if we can do the most good possible with what we have, I'm all for supporting this stuff.
Thank you. Jeff?
This is great. I, I appreciate everyone's, you know, the, the dialogue. What I wanted to say, I, I just wanted to, you know, really on the, I, like in the, the vein of being really transparent is my understanding, I, I worked a lot with Hadal. I want to thank Hadal. You know, she spent a lot of time with me to work this out. This is kind of the first time that we're requesting this, this type of use of this. So Hadal has been really helpful in all of that. This is the, so the $34,000 is the request for this, this fiscal year. And if I get this correct, the idea is that the, the three years that I mentioned, you know, you, this will, this will become part of the planning department budget request. So I think to Counselor Peak's concern, you know, this, that will be the, the mechanism that the council will see this again over the next two or three years is that'll be a line item in the budget of the planning department. So I'm, that was kind of the best way we could work this out. I think, I think it's important for me to say that because, you know, the, the, if you just look, which I think some people do, if you just look at the percentages or like a percent increase in budgets, this'll, when this comes up next fiscal year for the next budget, it'll look like the planning department got a pretty big percent increase. But what it is, it's really this, this different, this different revenue source coming in. So it's not like I'm asking for general fund increases. It's gonna come from the cannabis revenue line. But, so that'll be, I think for, for Counselor Peak's question, I think that'll be how we watch this each year. So that'll, that'll be how you can see that coming. I think, real quick on Route 10 sidewalks, I totally agree with Counselor Kuzinski. I think it's important to note that that's all Mass DOT. You know, the mayor and I have talked about Route 10. It's really something that Mass DOT has to, to really work with us and step up and look at Route 10 and, and we will, we kind, we're kind of pushing on that a little bit. But we did, we did do the study that I think you're mentioning, Counselor Kuzinski. It's the, the Conway School for emerging pathways, really envisioned the idea of a 10-foot-wide multi-use path that would go from like the Manheim Bridge, the West Street Bridge and all the way towards River Valley Co-op. And so that, that vision is there and Mass DOT is really funding projects like that. So at some point when we get conversations going with Mass DOT, that would be how that would happen. So, you know, that's, that's a great, it's a great project. It would be great if we could get that going faster.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone from the public who would like to make a comment? Not seeing any, Counselor.
Shall I make a motion, Madam President?
I would love it if you would.
I would like to make a motion to the full council approve a supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is $97,000 to be transferred from the 87 cannabis stabilization account in the following different ways. A, the planner full-time regular account, $34,000. B, the planner professional services account, $60,000. And C, the planner PVPC assessment account, $3,000 for the following purpose. To fund approximately 40% of the city planner's salary for FY21 from cannabis stabilization rather than the general fund correlating to cannabis-related activities. The replaced general funds will remain in the department to be used to fund the conservation agent position full-time, not a salary increase or raise. B, to fund cannabis and general planning-related activities within the department, including but not limited to hiring consultants to evaluate cannabis impacts, hiring consultants for due diligence and creation of design plans or preparing other studies as needed. And C, to fund the city's annual PVC membership assessment levied to all communities in the region.
Second.
Motion in a second to transfer from cannabis stabilization, forget the amount, $97,000 to various planning accounts. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kuzinski.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Peg Coniff.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Erica Flood.
Hi.
Motion passes. Counselor Rist.
That concludes, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Motion second to close the public hearings. Any further discussion? Barbara?
JP Kuzinski.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Peg Coniff.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Erica Flood.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
Public hearings are now closed. Moving on on the agenda, the next item up, since we have handled correspondence and communication, is Mayor Communications, Mayor LaChapelle. You're on mute.
Thank you, President Coniff. And congratulations to those on the council winning reelection as well as members who will be joining us. And also just recognizing both Counselor Flood as well as a counselor, Coniff, for their service and continued service until January. I, I just have to note a lot of folks who are moving to another stage of, of life or whatnot. It was very poignant and shows the public service dedication of Counselor Flood to, while talking about a transition to Google Meet, instantly steps up and says, okay, I'll work with East Hampton Media and we'll, we'll get us a training schedule done and, and whatnot. So, thank you for one, do not, but also just came right off the top of your head. So that, I just wanted to say that. I would also just thank the voters of East Hampton for the resounding confidence that you put in the work that I've done with in the office as well as with the council. As I said last night, I don't take any, this is a mandate to just go about what I think is best and when I can get through city council. It, it, it's not that at all. It's, I hear the message that continuing to listen, to work together, that there's a lot going on in East Hampton that we need to, to work together, this council, the subcommittees, and with the folks in the community. I would also, last comment around yesterday is the effect and success of two writing candidates in different races. And their really strong finish. One of them, their campaign, I think, was about 10 days long. And it, it really shows engagement by the community, but also is a very pointed tale to me and would help the council that there are visions and issues, policies that folks spoke to us last night and said, you know, gave, you know, was hum, you know, it's humbling to be reelected, but it also said, you know, what these two candidates represented did really resonated with them. Those of you who are familiar with writing campaigns, it's very difficult to get them organized. And both of the campaigns, writing campaigns did that effectively. That, that said, I wanted to share, and it's in the packet, account details for the cannabis impact fee stabilization. We just talked about, if, if you go to that page in the agenda, that, you know, we, if the 97,000 was approved, balance is 8.4714 and 15 cents. And using it is, we're, we're getting a little better at using it and doing so legally with the very weird guidance we get about this, this money. I think that Planner Bag and and Auditor Patel did a really great job figuring out the trickiness of the accounting to make sure that we're compliant with state and federal law and, and did just a really great job with it. And continue to talk about innovative ways to, to use this money and we're seeing the same innovation with our Bank Care Act money. So I wanted to, I'm not sure if people have questions for, for this, Madam President, or should I keep moving?
We can pause for a second. Is there anyone on the council who has any comments or questions about the cannabis stabilization account? And its balance currently. Counselor Rist?
I just wanted to say that I am including discussion of this in the finance committee meeting coming up as part of the quarterly report on our financing and that Hadal is gonna give us. So thank you for providing it in the packet because now we have written documentation for this in the free cash, which I'm sure you're gonna talk about next.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and actually just one last, I think I want to point out to people, is the interest on this, this money. You know, it's 3,000, 3,000, $335.22. It's not an amount to sneeze at. And it's, it's nice to see. And I wanted to make sure that folks realize that we do gain interest on this. I do, you know, I'm not gonna belabor the point, but I completely agree with what Counselor said on the call concerning cannabis stabilization money. It's not one, it will eventually go away, this part of it will go away. But also we're seeing big changes in the industry. And I think we're going to continue. So, and then the little flow chart which will be cleaned up by somebody who knows how to use technology better than myself, just kind of walks through the the somewhat confusing or misrepresentative way of how the cannabis money is used. I'm talking about And talking about, there's the 3% tax that comes from the state. Then there's the one-time host agreement signing fee and then the 3% impact fee for five years of operation for each individual dispensary within. And within the city. The, you know, and then you just watch down where, where the money goes, how it's negotiated. And how it can be used or not used. So I just. Wanted to share that with with folks. The next item I have are just an FYI and detail for the public is the retained earnings in water sewer and wastewater treatment plant. This is the, you know. We just certified it, the state certified the amount of money. 2,492 and $7. That needs to are retained earnings from the operations of water sewer and wastewater and can only be used for expenses related to those three departments. And then underneath that is exactly. You know, where it was spent, how it was spent, how we get to the the 2,400 number. And with that. Absent. Questions, I'm certainly, I'm finished with the presentation. The fee free cash overview that Counselor Rist mentioned is is submitted, but. I think comes up on next. Next agenda for discussion, right? It'll go to finance and then come up on on the following. City Council, is that the timing?
Yes. Anyone from the council have any questions for the mayor? Nope, not seeing any mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to reports of standing committees, we'll start with finance. I want to just give a heads up to public safety. We're going to move property. Right after finance so that there's some folks here from Lathrop and I want to get them in and out so they don't have to sit through the rest of the meeting. So Councilor Rist, you want to finish up with finance?
Yes, we will be having our next meeting next week. At which time we will discuss the tax classification and values. We will discuss the two items that I'm, the free cash items that I. I'm going to put in finance committee tonight and revolving fund. Also, I want to put a heads up to our auditor and our treasurer that I would like you to attend the meeting to do our quarterly report. On both COVID-19 grant funding, the nice spreadsheets you did before Jen. And Hadel, that report we talked about. On how we were for the first quarter on income and revenue, and we can also discuss. The cannabis money and the free cash that we, that information we just received. That's a continuing item on the agenda and we're going to discuss it. So if counselors want to attend, you get an idea of how our finances are doing. So I'm hoping you guys will be prepared for that at the next meeting. Okay. Madam President, I'm going to make a motion to send two items to. To Finance Committee and to set public hearings. The first is a supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is $2 million. From free cash, $2 million to be sent to number Fund 84 General Stabilization, $1,200,000. To be sent to Fund 85, 85 Capital Stabilization, $500,000. And Fund 88 Tax Rate Stabilization, $300,000. For the following purpose, to fund general stabilization. To provide stability in the current environment, to fund capital stabilization, to meet capital needs. And to fund tax rate stabilization to help reduce the impact of debt exclusions on the tax rate. I will do another one before I set these to committee. Give me a second here. The revolving fund, we received a revolving fund request this evening. Which is, is a yearly thing we have to do for the spending limits for the electric charging vehicles. I would like to make a motion to send both of these items to the finance committee for review. But well, let me pull that back. Barbara, do we need a? A public hearing for the revolving account? I don't believe we do.
No.
Okay, so I'm just gonna move both of those items to the.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
What are we doing with the donation account?
It's normally done on one night.
Okay.
So I'm going to have to do that after this and you reminded me about it. Unless someone objects, we always set up donation accounts in one session.
Okay, go.
So I'm going to make a motion to send a supplemental appropriation to Finance Committee. And also to set, I have to do two motions, a public hearing for that item. On the November 17th meeting. That's one motion.
Second.
Motion is second to move the. Stabilization, the account from free cash to stabilization and to set a public hearing. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Tom Peak. Dan Rist.
Hi.
Peg Coniff.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Erica Flood.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kuzinski.
I'll also make a motion to send to the finance committee the revolving account request. That's the motion.
Need a second. Second.
Motion is second to send the revolving fund request to the finance committee. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Peg Coniff. Salem Derby.
Hi.
Erica Flood.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kuzinski.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
So normally counselors, we set up donation accounts in one session unless anybody objects, I'd like to make a motion to establish that account.
Can you read the motion, the, read the document there, Dan?
I am. I just wanted to make sure nobody objects to it.
Oh, sorry.
Don't see any, Councilor Rist, go ahead.
All right, I'm going to read the, I I make a motion that the council approve and establish an East Hampton Police Department CERT team donation account. Pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53A. Approval is hereby given to establish an account for the purpose of receiving funds designated for the East Hampton Police Department CERT team.
Second.
Motion is second to establish a CERT team donation account. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Erica Flood.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kuzinski.
Hi.
Tom Peak. Dan Rist.
Hi.
Madam President, I believe that concludes finance.
Certainly, and just to reiterate, meeting on November 10th at 5:00 PM?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. Now I'd like to move property up. Counselor Flood, I believe you're going to give the report for property, including the Lathrop issue. Yes?
We're going to tag team this JP and I. If I could get a co-host for screen share on the, on the tech end of things.
Think what we're going to do is, I appreciate Counselor Flood stepping up with the tech end there. And. I see that we have several folks in the group here. And I believe Jeff Squires I saw, but I don't.
Yeah. Yep, he's there.
Oh, good, there he is. Who I think will be instrumental in explaining much of this. Back in 1996, just for a brief overview. The Lathrop community had submitted plans before the planning board and received a special permit. That special permit had many conditions. And one of the conditions of the special permit was that there be a conservation restriction. That is worked out with the city. Basically, a conservation restriction encumbers certain pieces of land. And forever protects that land, unless of course the legislature changes the rules on everything, but it basically for in perpetuity. There will be certain protections. And I think that Mr. Squires, a consultant for Lathrop, can help explain some of this to us. Member of Berkshire Design, I believe, group in Northampton. And I I think basically the importance here is it's for the council to decide whether or not. The conservation restriction as described is in the public interest and if so, we endorse the conversation, conservation restriction and it moves on the process. With several other approvals and eventually we encumbers the land. So that being said. Turn this over to Mr. Squires unless there's no other comments directly at this time from the counselors.
No, that's great. And thank you very much for the introduction and yeah, the pretenses. So this, yeah, this project, as you, as you noted, dates back a number of years. And as a result of one of the conditions in the original special permit for the Lathrop project. Back in 19, would finally amended back in 1998, required that a conservation restriction be placed on, you know. What was termed open space at that time on the property. And for for several reasons, it just that, that, that process has never. Come to fruition and it it just enforcement and a number of reasons. So anyway, this is. This is to finalize the fulfillment of that condition, which required roughly 78 acres. Of property on, on the Lathrop parcel. To be placed into conservation restriction. An agreement has been reached with Kestrel. To hold that CR. And Elizabeth could certainly speak to their. Elizabeth Black from, from Kestrel can certainly speak to their involvement in the, in the conservation restriction, but essentially. This is to preserve, you know, 78 acres of property on the existing Lathrop land. In perpetuity for, for habitat purposes, for, for trail systems and. Generally to comply with the condition of their 98 permit. And I, as I understand it, this is the final, the final step in approvals from the city standpoint. We've received. Approvals and or endorsements from the planning board, from the Conservation Commission. And from the. I guess Properties Committee earlier this week. So my understanding, this is, this is sort of the final step so that we can move forward and and record all of this and in perpetuity. So happy to answer any questions?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, Counselor Flood, could you scroll to the page before this one that you have on the screen?
Yeah, I was looking for that one.
Better articulates the two chunks of property. So there's that triangle in the very middle. And then I think that, that thing on the top is the other portion and maybe. I don't know if Elizabeth's going to speak to that, but I think that better articulates what we're talking about here.
There was a really nice map with a green overlay. I don't know if that's.
It wasn't in the packet.
Oh, I was looking, I was scrolling for that. I wonder if anybody has that available because I, I think that was the best. Either Planner Bag or Jeff Squire, do you have that green overlay map?
I I do, and I'm happy to share it if somebody can give me screen sharing.
Yeah, President Coniff, do you think that would be more appropriate?
Yeah. Let me find you, Jeff. There you are.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff.
Use it only for good, Jeff, not for evil. I've given you a lot of power.
This is, I'm proud of us.
What's going on here? Oh, I'm sorry. All right. So technical challenges here. Here we go. So this plan, hopefully. Everybody can see a plan with a green, couple of green areas later on. So this is generally the area that is being proposed to be placed in conservation.
Jeff, could you please enlarge that if it's possible? And one more time. There, now I think that kind of really. If you move it around a bit, folks can really understand, I think, where the, where the two pieces are.
Absolutely. So here's, here's the entrance of Front Road and into the Lathrop. This is the main, main facility. There's 11 acres that encompasses, you know, largely a portion of wetlands here. The remaining 67 acres is the western portion of the property, which includes. You know, a number of resource areas, but also old farmland, a number of trail systems along the Bassett Brook. And so, you know, really the, the intent is to conserve this property as, as a part of a larger greenway and, and. You know, protection effort. And so in in terms of the public interest and and whatnot. You know, I think this is, this is certainly in that. With that intent in mind.
Does anyone have any questions of any, Counselor Rist?
Yeah, Jeff. Does this prevent Lathrop from expanding into that area should they want to? It's just a thought of mine that they may want to build more buildings. I'm just curious if it prevents them from doing that.
So, you know, so part of this process has been connected to, you know. Conversations with Lathrop about the potential to expand and where those opportunities might exist. And so all of that takes that into consideration. There's no plans at the moment. But understanding the constraints with resource areas and what, what potential areas are available for development. This certainly takes into consideration all of that. So I don't think it hinders. You know, Lathrop's plans in the future to do, you know, any future development if they should choose to do that.
I just want to follow up. I assume, I guess that's the north side where your cursor is now, that might be available to them. But they really can't build on a conservation restriction because that would certainly defeat the purpose, wouldn't it?
Exactly.
So they can't expand into that large area if they want it.
They cannot expand in into this western area and and mostly. The reason for that is because of of existing resource areas.
Okay, good enough. Thank you.
And all I was going to say was, wasn't that the point of this permit that they got, the special permits? And this just was never done, but part of the special permitting 27 years ago, whatever it is now. Was to make these conservation restricted. So it's not like we're deciding today to do it. This was decided 25 years ago. And we're just doing it now. So if it was going to restrict them 25 years ago, it restricts them today and there's nothing new. About that. Is that a fair assessment, Jeff?
I, I think that's a fair assessment. I think, I think the areas that were described in the earlier permits were a little bit more vague than they are now. You know, they encompass primarily wetland areas. You know, really weren't necessarily. I guess entirely within the public interest because this protects trail systems and agricultural area and other areas that weren't previously considered. So I think this. Sharpened the pencil a little bit on, on what that conservation restriction entails. And is, is, is a much better product as as a result. But yeah, you're absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any other questions of Jeff or Jeff or anyone else?
Is it possible to hear from Kestrel? About your participation?
Yes, Roblica is my last name. I, I am actually a consultant for Kestrel Land Trust. So as Jeff said, Kestrel will be the holder of this conservation restriction, which means Kestrel is taking on the obligation to. Annually monitor the conservation restriction property to make sure that Lathrop or any subsequent landowner hasn't done anything to violate the terms, which essentially prohibit. Development, any structures, motorized vehicles, introduction of invasives, excessive logging, anything that harms the water quality, that sort of thing. So. Kestrel is taking on that job and is happy to do that. It holds quite a number of conservation restrictions throughout the valley.
If I may share for a minute again, I think one thing that we discussed too was the qualities that are being. Really the, the public benefits and I I found this is in the language of the restriction, just. You know, the values protected by this conservation restriction include the following, there's open space protection. Protection of the soils. This is prime farmland soil in some of these areas, as was pointed out. Protection of wildlife habitat, water quality protection, wetlands. Water supply protection. So there's a number of layers in here that I just think that this, it's all laid out in the restriction and I think. They just did a fantastic job of laying it all out for us to understand how important this space is for the community. And and just the depth of the public benefit of of restricting this area.
Thank you. Any questions? I don't see any. Do you want to, does someone want to make a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, Elizabeth, you had a question?
It's, it's more of a comment. We need both the city council's approval as well as the mayor's.
Is, it's more of a comment. Uh, we need both the city council's approval as well as the mayor's. On this document. So I just want to add that as a, um, logistics question when we need signatures and notaries and all that.
Is Barbara on here?
We can speak for the council and the mayor will, uh, I think she's aboard on this, but, uh, that would be something that we would turn it over to the mayor. Who then.
Okay.
Work through the documentation.
Thank you.
Hope this helped you move this along.
Uh, Council, hang, uh, hang on, J P. Council Peak?
Hope I didn't, um, miss this somehow, but, um, is it my understanding then that the finding of the committee is that this is in the public interest? That sounds like, I just don't know if that's what explicitly stated.
The committee had voted, uh, two to zero, uh, to recommend that the city council approve.
Okay, great, thank you.
Conservation restriction. Thank you for bringing that up. Ah, I see Counselor, uh, Counselor Bag. Yes, Planner Bag.
Jeff Bag.
Hi, thank you. Um, the question from Ms. Robica, or, sorry, Roblica. Raises a really good point. So there is some information in the packet about the, the motion that city council would make. Um, it might be overkill, but it might be belts and suspenders to have. The council take that, uh, make that motion as it was kind of included in the packet. And also make a separate motion to authorize the mayor to off, also, uh, execute this, uh, C R at the same time. Just, you know, going through the motions, either like for the next item. You know, city council often has to authorize the mayor to execute some of these things too. So it might be just super clear if the council takes that extra step. I apologize that we didn't really anticipate that.
And do we have those motions ready?